Good evening. My name is Arlene Miller and it's my privilege to welcome you to this edition of Our Town. Sort of a tradition in Long Meadow is to have a special town meeting in the fall and it's my privilege today to have Stephen Crane, town manager, be my guest to talk about the good, the bad, and the ugly of what the citizens can expect for the special town meeting which is October 25th.
Tuesday the 25th at 7:00 PM in the gym.
In the gym?
At the high school, yeah.
Why in the gym?
Well, we'll discuss that.
We'll discuss that, okay. That's chit-chat. So just, Stephen and I would like, we always like to do a little civics lesson before we have this conversation. When we have a town meeting, there's always an agenda and articles for people to vote on. And by Massachusetts general law, since we are a town meeting form of government and the citizens of the town are the legislative branch of that government, there are several things that the town meeting is empowered to do and only the town meeting is empowered to do which the town manager and/or the select board or the school committee may not do.
The big thing is appropriating money.
Good.
And passing bylaws for the town.
And the bylaws can either be general bylaws or zoning bylaws.
Correct.
And the zoning bylaws tend to require a larger percentage of the vote than the general bylaws.
Yeah, it depends on what's being regulated, but yeah, many of them do require 2/3s vote.
Particularly the zoning bylaws. All the zoning bylaws.
Oh, all the zoning bylaws.
I think so, yeah. This is good. The general bylaws are majority. So as we go through this warrant, which is what it's called, which is the agenda for the special town meeting, we're going to be talking about now 17 articles. And what we'd like to do for this particular interview is just chit-chat for a few minutes about each of the articles so that you, the residents, have an idea of what to expect. We hope that you take the time to come to the special town meeting because money is being, your money and my money is being, and his money because he's a resident, is being allocated for spending. And there are some major issues that will impact our town going forward. So it's important that you participate. So we're going to start. So there's 17 articles. The first one, I'll just sort of start it and he can flop in, is to vote to raise an appropriate $100,000 for the purposes of paying one-half of the $200,000 of short-term borrowing issued in May of 2016 as part of the final financing on the Long Meadow High School school project.
So the reason this article's here is that the town has some excess levy capacity up to that 2.5%, which we establish a budget based on what, on certain assumptions. And sometimes those revenue or valuation assumptions or the data that feeds them change after, excuse me, we've set our budget. And so then sometimes we are left over with a little bit of extra taxing capacity.
Yeah.
And still only to the 2.5% under the state constitution. We had a little bit of room left and we recommended to the select board that we utilize that remaining taxing capacity for a few of these items. So when it says raise and appropriate, that's existing taxing capacity for this year, which doesn't affect.
But we still have to, we have to pay off this debt anyhow.
Right, and you have to pay off the debt. So you save a little bit of interest, you advance the debt payments.
So that's the issue, really to advance the debt.
Correct.
And the question is, is it coming out of that or is it coming out of the school committee budget? But we don't need to get into that.
And it doesn't really represent an increase in taxes. It's already been, the budget and everything has been built around 2.5% increase.
Okay.
And because certain outside data points changed, that number, we didn't hit that 2.5% and this kind of gets us up there.
Good. So this is recommended by the finance committee, which is always good in my, from my view, to have their blessing on these kinds of things. And this is just, we still have to pay the other $100,000 at some time, but not now.
Yeah, you find a 20 in your pocket doing laundry and you pay off a debt versus spending it on something new. That's basically what this is.
Okay, okay. So Article 2 is to raise an appropriate $25,000 for liability insurance unemployment.
So Article 2 and 3 are similarly two small kind of financial cleanup items. Article 2 was to add additional money for unemployment, which we thought we were going to need because our first month of unemployment, our first bill essentially for unemployment insurer.
So we had some layoffs.
Way, yeah, I mean, a lot of turnover, layoffs. We had a much larger bill than we thought we were going to get. So we asked for the money to make sure we can get through the rest of the fiscal year, which runs till next June, through next June. Article 3 was a transfer of $30,000 into the operational stabilization fund, which is really money left over after we get through these articles from either our raise and appropriate or from free cash, which we have about $900,000. Since the article, since the warrant was signed by the select board, we received our next unemployment insurance bill and it was much lower.
So it's, situations change.
Yep.
You're going to, we're going to roll that issue.
We're going to withdraw, we're going to motion to withdraw Article 2.
So we don't need Article 2's money.
And then we'll take, and then we will move to amend Article 3. The select board will move to amend Article 3. So instead of $30,000 to operational stabilization, it'll be $55,000.
Yeah, and so Article 3 going forward because of that is, because it deals with the stabilization fund, requires a 2/3s vote.
Yes.
And so we should just say, the town has several stabilization funds. One is a capital stabilization fund. Another is the operational stabilization fund. So it's like a savings account, so to speak, where the town puts aside money. It helps us with our bond rating.
It does, and interest rates.
And it also helps us with having money in case of an emergency that we need. We probably have several hundred, several million.
2.6 or 7 million at this point.
In the operating stabilization.
And you want 5% to 10% of your revenue to be in the operational stabilization. I think we're at about 6.
So this is just good financial management and being cautious and Long Meadow's been sort of, it's been very, I think, conservative generally.
We have a AA2 rating. We have the highest bond rating a town like this could have. It just got reaffirmed last week by Moody's and it's doing things like this to help us keep it.
Yeah, great. So we're happy, we're glad to be, we're lucky to be in this position.
Yes.
So kudos to all you guys that manage the town for that. Article 4 is very routine. This has to do with the community preservation program.
It's the allocation of the, CPA, Community Preservation Act is a special tax, as you know, on top of the 2.5% that the town voted to voluntarily adopt.
Right.
And under the law, there has to be, there are certain functions that have to be funded. Creation of open space.
Historic.
Historic preservation and housing.
Right.
And so a certain percentage, based on a formula, has to be set aside for those purposes. And that set aside needs to be done through a town meeting vote and that's what this warrant article is.
Well, and just to say, under the surcharge, which is the local vote, local appropriation, we raise annually about $338,000 and that goes into the kitty. And then the state gives us a match and at this, this year it's a 19% match. So they're giving us another, according to this, $64,000 to add to that. So we'll have about $402,000 in the town's local kitty to spend on these kinds of funds. So the law says, as Stephen said, is 10% of that money has to go to open space, 10% into a community housing category and 10% into historic preservation. 70% remains in undesigned funds. More on that later. But this is routine. There's no real decision-making. This we have to do in order to keep going.
And then our outstanding community preservation committee ends up reviewing the project requests and its members, including you, who do a great job managing those funds, make the recommendations to town meeting. But there's none of those on this warrant. Usually those are in the spring.
Right, and/or in the fall, but we don't need to do it. We did the tennis court one time in the fall.
This time we don't have one.
Right, but everybody's enjoying the tennis court, so that was, some of that is with community preservation money. So the next, Article 5, we're all ready to Article 5, will vote to accept, oh, another one, dear to my heart, the DPW committee site recommendation report. And again, this is a task force slash committee that was formed by the selectmen, nine-person committee, to review the sighting and other issues related to a new DPW facility which is sorely needed in the town of Long Meadow. This is no money involved in Article 5. It's simply a summary report that the committee has asked the town meeting, the select board to put on here, just so we could inform the community at what steps, what steps have been taken, where we are with that project, and give a little bit of a forecast about what's to come.
And I think that we're asking, essentially we're asking town meeting to accept the recommendation or accept the report which recommends the Grand Meadows Tennis Club as the preferred site for the DPW. And again, as you noted, no appropriations going to follow this. It just is, like you said, the committee did its work. They recommended the Grand Meadows site. The select board accepted that report and endorsed, essentially endorsed that recommendation. And so this is basically taking it to the next level and it gives us an opportunity to present the work of the committee, which again, another committee you're included on, which, and they did phenomenal work and gave up a good bear their summer to do this, to get to this recommendation. And we just want to present why the committee's recommending Grand Meadows and the benefits of that site and really basically prepare town meeting for an upcoming request, probably in the annual town meeting.
Yes, hopefully.
For funding for construction of the DPW.
Will you be asking for a motion here?
Yeah, it'll be a motion for town meeting to accept the report.
Oh, great. So it's really to accept the report and essentially accepting then the recommendation.
Well, it certainly will be an affirmation that we heard the recommendation anyway. So some people may vote for it and not like the site.
Yeah.
But really it is for town meeting to endorse the work of the committee and the site.
Great.
So we can really, so we can move forward kind of full-tilt.
Yeah.
On site ac, on preparing to ask town meeting for site acquisition.
Right, I think it's fair to say that if the town meeting were to say, oh, you know, we don't want to do that, that the committee might be back to square one and looking at some of the parcels that they had rejected in the past.
Don't say that.
No, I do want to say.
No, that is true.
I do want to say that because I want people who didn't want site A, B, or C.
Right.
To know that if they don't want site A, B, or C and they like this site, they should come out and support this and show that that is important to them. I think that's important.
Yeah, it was, it was a long road to get to that site. I know some people thought just right off the bat it should be the site, but there's an additional cost to it and you lose the opportunity, you lose a really valuable commercial parcel.
So there's some pros and cons?
But the benefits, but based on the work of the committee and I fully support their recommendation, the pros of the site greatly outweigh the cons and I think that's just what we want to present to town meeting and have town meeting agree with us.
And we didn't come to that easily. So I think it's, I think it's important that even those who were against, again, other sites that everybody knows what I'm talking about.
Wolf swamp or water tower.
All of those, they really.
We hope you'll support our recommendation.
Yeah, they need to get, come to this meeting and say, and support that.
Yep.
Okay, so Article 6 is to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury $277,000 to allocate some monies that were not allocated at the annual town meeting back because now we have that money to be able to do that, I think is what you're going to sort of explain.
Yeah, the select board has policies for certain things that they want to have funded. One is operations, excuse me, the fire truck replacement fund, the capital stabilization fund, and the OPEB liability fund are three things that the select board says they want to spend a certain percentage of their general fund budget on those three items every year.
To do it regularly instead of being hit all at once.
Correct.
So that was, this is the plan. And these articles, these were before the town meeting, all of them, I believe, in May?
Well, they were a part of the annual budget. They weren't standalone articles like this.
Right, but they were cut, changed, amended, whatever. So this is a second viewing of those because now we have better information on money flow.
Well, more money. And I think that we cut these, we cut these contributions that we would have normally made in FY '17.
Yeah.
To offset the cost of free, or tuition-free full-day kindergarten. And so because we did get some free cash from FY '16, we wanted to take some of that money and then reallocate it back to fully fund the policy directives that the select board has. And these are all investments into future expense and that's why it's important to keep these funded.
Well, I'm just noticing this to tell you the truth. It's not recommended by the finance committee.
Yeah, and I went to that meeting and I wasn't entirely sure. I don't really recall why they didn't recommend it.
So people might be hearing.
I know they're going to make a report on it.
Sure, okay. But from what you're saying, it sounds to me, these, again, these were in the plan, they're part of the planning, financial planning of, you know, like you might put aside $1,000 a month for your next car or whatever you do. This is sort of what that's about because we're going to spend this money eventually. Why not put it aside when we can? And so that's, that's why the selectmen are coming back.
Yeah, and I'm at a loss as to recall why the finance committee, and I know they discussed it at length and they'll be giving a full report, but you're right, they did not recommend it.
And maybe, and it's not unheard of that they might change their recommendation at the town meeting. So we don't know. Article 7, because it has to do with the adult center and a greater conversation, we're just going to hold.
There's usually one or two big articles in each town meeting that gets people out.
The hook?
The hook. Number 7 is the hook, so we'll talk about that.
Well, I do think 5 is a hook too personally, but 7 is a hook. So Article 8 is to transfer some monies in the treasury from the water retain earnings and sewer retain earnings for the purchase of global positioning systems, the GPS system. I thought we had that.
We do not.
We do not. So this is, we're way behind a lot of towns.
Well, not exactly.
Okay.
To be able to put GPS units into a town-owned vehicle, and this is going to sound crazy, but it's true.
Oh, it's into the vehicle?
It's into the vehicle.
Oh.
And it's a change in working condition for the people using those vehicles. And if the workforce is represented through a collective bargaining agreement or if they're a unionized workforce, you have to impact bargain the installation of GPS units into their vehicles because again, arbitrators throughout the state have held that it's a change in working condition. And it's, you know, labor, I won't bore with labor loss stuff.
No, don't.
But suffice to say, we just did our next, we just did our new three-year contract with the DPW union. And we have a good group of guys. It was a good, it was a good bargaining session. I think we both understood, both sides understood that there were certain things we wanted to do that were for both sides' benefit. GPS units was one of those things, so they agreed through the collective bargaining process to install them. Because we ratified and the select board approved the agreement in time to ask for some free cash to pay for the installation of GPS units, we decided, hey, why not, if we've got the funds and we've got the permission, let's do it right now.
Right, and essentially the coming from water bills and sewer bills.
Yeah, some of the general fund, but they're also water. I mean, water and sewer pay for a part of a lot of vehicles in DPW because they're used for water and sewer purposes in addition to general fund. I think the big thing is just for GPS units, it's not, it's not really a babysitting tool. I mean, it is good to track where people are, but it tracks, you know, vehicle speed, idling, acceleration, braking. So we collect a lot of data. It helps us maintain our vehicles better. It will help, I think, when we look at our plow routes, how we deploy in snowstorms, where people are. I think it'll be a great management enhancement.
Do we put it in the trash trucks?
They may have them.
They may have them, but then can we interface with them?
In our next agreement, we should look at that.
Yeah, that would be, that would be very good. Okay, so that's Article 8 and that is recommended by the finance committee. So Article 9 is to transfer some money from the ambulance fund of $50,000 to the purchase of cardiac monitors and a auto pulse unit. So we have two ambulances? And so one of them is old and one of them is, we needed a second one.
We needed, well, we have one unit that needs to be upgraded and it's like a $4,000 software upgrade for the old unit that's 10 years old and would have been replaced. Basically, the software update that we needed to keep the thing running properly was just ahead of the scheduled replacement. And so we just decided to accelerate the replacement. And the select board did vote to increase ambulance rates recently. Basically, we were well below market. And so if you have the misfortune of having, or misfortune, well, if you have the misfortune of having amens at your house, that's bad. But if a private ambulance company comes to your house, it's going to be a much larger bill than that.
Don't worry about that. So that's not this. This is simply for the cardiac monitor.
But the revenue that funds this comes out of the ambulance fund, which is funded by the revenues that they.
So it's not from the taxes, it's from a special fund?
Yeah, ambulance fund.
Yeah, and I think, I'd like to have a cardiac monitor in my house right now. Okay, so Article 10 is again, transferring money from sewer retained earnings and, just from sewer retained earnings. This is a big one, $160,000 for the purposes of funding a sewer infiltration/inflow analysis. And I believe this is required by.
It's required, it's a requirement of the state.
Federal or state?
It could be both.
Sounds DEP.
I think it is, it could be a pass-through, like a federal requirement pass-through to the state DEP.
I think that's what it is.
But you have to do it every 20 years. It is, I mean, we have a lot, we have many, many sewer lines and so it's a pretty large-scale Infiltration inflow is really groundwater getting into our sewer pipes and then that groundwater along with the sewage going to Bondi's Islands where it's metered. And so we pay to treat based on a volume.
Right.
And so we're paying to treat groundwater that really shouldn't be in the system at all. So in fact, Rich Foster did some, a presentation Monday night with some slides that I think he may have for this, a town meeting, that really show in an unambiguous way why a study like this will benefit the town in the future.
We have separate pipes for sewage and.
Stormwater, but groundwater.
Groundwater getting in.
Seeping in.
Yeah.
And a lot of the sewer pipes are clay or taricata, which is really kind of a porous material.
And says I who should know this stuff, so yeah, that's a good.
So that's one of those, I mean.
So this is not, this, these meters are not just for one reading. We'll have them for a while or do they?
They do, they do testing and they do, they do testing throughout our system and they, and I'm not proficient in the techniques that they use to measure I&amp;I.
But are they installed onsite or they, where are they installed?
Now you're getting beyond my depth.
Oh, good, that's fine, that's fine. We'll get, we'll get, we'll get more, we'll get more detail at town meeting, this is just.
Yeah, the EPW director and our assistant superintendent, Pete Theroux, for water and sewer can explain it much better than I can.
That's good. Okay, so Article 11 is to authorize the treasurer to borrow $530,000 to replace, it sounds like to me, Engine 2 of our fire apparatus. Now, I know we do these on a routine, usually on a planned.
We're supposed to, but the town got away from the plan.
And that's why we're putting some money in annually so that's not a sticker shock. And we did just buy a ladder. So this comes, to me is a little surprise, so.
Well, the big question is why do we need a new truck? We just bought one. And the answer is we need a certain number of vehicles that can perform a certain array of functions to really maintain our accreditation for our fire service.
And we also got rid of one, didn't we, when we got the, when we got the ladder?
We did. The ladder one replaced Engine 3.
Right.
And what happened was they bought Engine 3 in like 1989 and then they bought Engine 2 in 91 or 92. And they have a 25-year use life.
Right.
And when you buy two trucks two years apart.
It hurts.
25 years from then, you're going to have to buy two trucks two years apart.
Yeah.
And so we really hope to get, to keep Engine 2, which is really, it's not our structure fire vehicle, it's our primary rescue vehicle. So car crashes, which between the highway and local streets.
Ambulance and 2 go to the site.
Correct, but it's, so rescue, like the jaws of life are hydraulic pieces of equipment that are hard-wired or mounted onto the vehicle and you can't just take them off and throw them into another truck and use them. And we use that rescue equipment often.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, yes. So, and it takes a year. Between the time you sign the plan, the bill of sale for the truck, it takes a year to get it. And so that's why we advanced this out of the normal capital plan where it was going to be, I think endorsed by me. We moved it up simply because Engine 2 is really failing and we want to keep it on the road because it's a really critical piece of equipment for us.
Sure, and we can afford it because we're borrowing.
Yep.
And borrowing interest rates are low.
And we do this on bond anticipation notes, which are like not even 1% interest.
Good, okay. And this requires though, because of the borrowing.
Yeah, because of the borrowing, yeah.
A 2/3s vote. So that's a big vote. And this also is recommended by the finance committee.
And I should note that it's a $530,000 borrowing. The truck is about 650. We have 120 set aside in our truck fund.
Yeah, and had we been able to wait longer, we would have had more of that. And this also gives credence to why you want to transfer that money regularly into the truck fund.
Truck fund, correct.
Yes. Okay, so Article 12 is, this sounds to me like we're going to reduce spending by a certain amount. We're going to, we're going to shut off some of the already spent?
Yeah, I mean, basically.
It's to reduce the amount appropriated and authorized to borrow for the Long Meadow High School project on May 2010, special town meeting, from $78,000 to by $31,000. Am I reading that wrong?
You are. Well, it's 31 million.
Oh, it's more, oh, just a million.
No, 31, yeah. So basically, when the town voted to authorize the borrowing for the high school, they vote, town meeting voted the authorization for the entire amount of the project as it was known at the time. And so instead of only, excuse me, only authorizing.
The exact amount.
The share of the town versus the state, the MSBA pays for about half the school.
Right.
They voted for the entire amount of the project. So now the, this vote is just really kind of a cleanup vote.
Cleanup.
To have the authorization then match the actual amount borrowed on the local side, on the town side.
So it's less, it's less?
It's less.
That's good.
Yeah, but it doesn't, we're not spending, anyway, I assume we're not spending more money, but we're not borrowing more money for the high school, you know, going forward. It's just a cleanup vote.
Good, so that should be, and that's of course recommended. So Article 13 is a long.
Yeah, basically Article 13 is a bylaw thing.
It's a general bylaw and it's about foreclosed properties.
Well, we, a couple of years ago, we did a foreclosed property bylaw that required foreclosed properties to be registered and have a local maintenance company with a, with contact information so Paul Healy could have somebody when they fell into disrepair, which happens actually more frequently than I think people, you know, we do get a lot of calls about it, but there are a lot more foreclosures and sort of blighted properties in Long Meadow that I think people are, would be really willing to believe. And so the foreclosed bylaw has actually been a huge success. We've gotten the foreclosed properties registered. We've collected about 300 bucks each time in revenue. And when there's been a problem with the property, Paul Healy's had somebody to call and get out there and fix it. But we have a lot of properties that are in poor condition that have been abandoned.
And not foreclosed.
But there may not be a mortgage on them or somebody may be paying the taxes but just not living there. And so really taking this foreclosed bylaw that's been a great tool in helping to manage and eliminate blight and extending that to just abandoned or vacant.
Or blighted, yeah.
Right.
So is this going to be read or just going to accept this?
I think it's going to be, you know, move to approve as written.
Okay, so that's 13. And that, these articles, the zoning and bylaw articles do not require approval and not by the finance committee, so that you will not see that.
No recommendations.
So 14 is another bylaw, general bylaw, and this has to do with appointments.
Just gives the select board a little more time to make appointments to boards and committees.
It sounds like it's making it more complicated, but.
No, it just gives them more, because sometimes what ends up happening is you have interviews on a certain time and then you may have, using the summertime, issues with quorum or people not being there to vote on the approval. Gives them a little more time.
We need to streamline this. Okay, and then Article 15 is about, is this a bylaw too?
It's a demand notice.
It's a general bylaw and it's to punish people harder and faster, it looks like General bylaw, and it's to punish people harder and faster, it looks like to me, who don't pay their water or sewer bills on time.
Yeah, the demand fees are set by bylaw, and they haven't been changed in years. And so basically, it's to have the demand fee for people who are late in paying their bills really more accurately reflect the cost, the additional cost to pursue collection of that money.
It also allows for churn off of the water.
Right, but that was already in there. This just changes the monetary.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, it just ups the demand fee to $25. And that really is, if you pay your bills on time, you'll never have a problem with this.
And so most people won't have a problem with it, hopefully.
Correct.
So Article 16 is about, is defining some definitions in the zoning bylaws regarding accessory structure, family stories, and a structure. So again, will this be just as written?
Yeah, I mean, the family one, we've talked about at a previous town meeting. It got a little confusing. Basically, most communities have a definition of family in their bylaws. We do not. And that really allows you to prohibit 10 or 15 people from renting a house that aren't related.
I'm surprised you came up with four.
That's the standard.
So not more than four, but what if you have three kids?
But it says related.
Not more than four related?
Unrelated.
Oh, unrelated.
Right.
Little detail. Good girl, good, good. Yeah, absolutely.
So, like I said, this is really the standard definition, or a version of a standard definition throughout the Commonwealth.
Sure, and that's the purpose of it, is to do just what you're saying.
And so, and then structures, accessory structures, these are things that really challenge the Building Commissioner when he's trying to enforce and interpret our zoning bylaws.
And this requires, this is a zoning bylaw, 2/3 vote.
Correct. And if people have questions about these, they should call me or Paul Healy, you know, over the next few days. Or, you know, Paul will be there, I'll be there. I think representatives from the zoning board will be there to answer questions at town meeting.
Yeah, that's great. And 17 is another zoning bylaw change, and this has to do with keeping up your land, unsightly property.
Correct, unsightly property. And basically.
This is strengthening existing stuff as well.
So right now, you can have a vehicle that is, you're not allowed to have unregistered vehicles.
Like the pod.
Well, it's pods and dumpsters, and now that I've finished my kitchen project, I'm completely fine with this limitation on dumpsters, since mine was out there for like six weeks. But this is a limitation on the amount of time you can have dumpsters or pods. I think it's reasonable. It's 60 days, or you can get extension from the Building Commissioner. Sometimes projects just go a little bit longer for valid reasons.
Sure.
So we don't want to, we want to make sure people can, you know, make improvements to their homes, because that improves the value. And then accessory structure, the way the law is written is confusing, but basically the second one is no parking in front yard.
We never could. Well, we could, you can't park before the back of the structure.
Right, but you can park on your front lawn right now.
Okay.
And this would.
Eliminate that, yeah.
Eliminate that. And then the other thing, of course, is, you can have, it's easy to get a car registered, it's hard to get it inspected. So we have people who have cars that are clearly unable to be moved, but they get them registered. And so even though they're on blocks or just junked, we can't enforce kind of having them remove them from the property. So this adds uninspected to that bylaw.
So this is really a quality of life, nice environment for the town.
Yes, and these are the things, we focused on where do the most complaints come from and where are our abilities to help the weakest. And so this is where we're starting from.
And that's great. So we skipped over Article 7.
We did, yep.
And we have how much, every time you want to use on it. But Article 7 basically is the culmination, it's a recommendation by the committee, I'm just going to summarize what I think it is. The committee or task force appointed by the Select Board.
Adult Center Building Committee, yeah.
The Adult Center Building Committee. These folks worked very, very hard for several years to find a site for a new adult center. And this motion is asking the town to approve a new adult center at Bliss Park and some money to do design work on a facility at that site.
So like the DPW Committee, there was kind of a parallel track for the Adult Center Building Committee that was appointed, you know, members of both committees were carryovers from previous task forces and things like that. But these were, both committees were appointed by the Select Board around the same time. And again, another dedicated group of volunteers who gave up a lot of their summer to look at sites. It was a different kind of process for the Adult Center Building Committee than it was the DPW Committee, largely because it's a different, there are different phases of development, and there are different types of projects.
Very different.
But basically, you know, the Adult Center Building Committee went around, they also looked at varied, you know, all the sites they thought there was potential for, public and private. And they really looked at what's important for them. Not only does what should a senior center look and how, look like and how big should it be, but what should we be doing inside of it? Not only now, I mean, we don't, to build a building so we can have a bigger bridge game isn't really what we're trying to do. We're trying to increase the programmatic offerings for seniors that focus on wellness and activity and outdoorsy type things. This has been, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission study three years ago that kind of got this effort started, really identified those program types as the things that will get, I say younger seniors, you know, people in their 60s and 70s who we don't regularly see at the adult center, out and engaged in those types of programs.
All good reasons.
All good reasons, and I think.
This is like apple pie in the American flag.
Correct. And I think that, you know, the folks at the adult center now do a great job providing fun, quality programs for the people that use the adult center. And I think the users of the adult center today are generally happy with what they do and with this facility now. But there's absolutely no doubt that a new or renovated adult center is an emerging need for the community. I mean, we have many needs, but I do think that that is one of them. Our senior population is growing much faster than the school-aged children population. In fact, school-aged children are really going, gone decline compared to previous years. The seniors' population's going up. We collect $33 million in property taxes, and you can imagine that people who are 65 and older probably pay a healthy share of that $33 million. The adult center budget is $145,000.
Yeah, it's always been.
So it really is, the senior community really does not get a really proportional share. Now, if you talk to many seniors, they're happy to contribute to the schools because their kids went through it and it's a big deal for them. Nevertheless, I think we could do a little better for the seniors.
Let's concentrate on this motion.
So that's the background between why do we feel a new senior center or renovated senior center is warranted. I do think it is in the coming years. It's not needed today like a new DPW is, but in the coming years, it's an emerging need. So they went through and they looked at a bunch of sites, including the existing site, and their recommendation was a relatively small part of Bliss Park, which if you are looking at Bliss, kind of standing next to the tennis courts on Bliss Road, kind of facing north, if you can visualize that, over to your right.
Facing toward the.
Facing towards Springfield.
Okay.
Over towards the right, there's basketball courts that are kind of set down.
There's a parking lot and then basketball.
There's a little, like a T-ball diamond and a basketball court, and then there's the kind of a grove of really end-of-life pine trees, of tall pine trees. And our tree warden has said, you know, these trees are kind of at the end of their life. And so it's really kind of an underutilized area. And so that was the area they proposed for the senior center to go in. The idea was actually endorsed unanimously by the Park Board, because I think the concept going forward is to have a more recreationally-based facility.
The Park Board approved this site?
Approved, recommended Bliss Park.
Really?
Yeah, endorsed, I should say.
Okay.
And like I said, I think they can see the potential of, you know, if they build a gymnasium, you know, pickleball is a huge thing, so the gym at Greenwood is used all the time for pickleball, which is a version of like paddle.
This would be on Bliss Road.
So it would be, the entrance would be, well, we haven't really laid out the site, but you can, we don't even have like a sketch, a concept sketch. But basically, it would be more towards the Bliss Road side of it. People call it the, you know, oh, the area where people park to walk their dogs. You're not really supposed to walk your dogs in parks, especially off-leash anyway. But yes, that's the area. And it isn't underutilized.
Certainly it's not going to be coming in off of Laurel, it's going to be coming in off of Bliss.
It wouldn't displace any amenities now. It wouldn't displace the pool, the ball diamond, the playground, but it would be kind of right in the middle of all that in this kind of underutilized area.
So this vote would do what?
This vote would basically allocate $200,000 for the continued design of the facility at Bliss Park, to really effectively design a building. You need to know where it's going to go.
So if residents are not supportive of using Bliss Park, they should not vote for this?
Yes, and I think, you know, even if Article 7 doesn't pass, the effort towards planning for a new senior center will continue. It just will likely not continue at Bliss Park, because town meeting will have said no.
Right.
And we won't have the funds. I'm not sure how an amendment to change the location in this article will fare. There are restrictions on, you know, you can't change the scope of an article through an amendment on town meeting floor.
Right. So if this article was just asked for $200,000, that might pass. Or if it was asked to, if it was divided in half, it may have a different outcome.
Correct.
But because they're combined.
It's an up or down vote.
It's an up or down vote.
Yeah.
Okay, so it doesn't end the search, or it doesn't diminish the mission of, or the commitment of the town to perhaps go forward with a new senior center? It just says, right now, at this time, at this place, maybe this isn't the right.
Yeah.
If it's down. If it's up, it says, go ahead and do design work.
It's some level of endorsement of the park.
It's, yeah.
But it still doesn't commit, it still doesn't obligate the town to develop it at the park. That ultimately comes through a debt exclusion vote to do the project. I mean, that's the ultimate vote.
Right.
And actually, I take that back. To really do this, the town would then have to subsequently vote to change the public use, under our opinion that we received from Town Council, is not Article 97 land.
But it still is a park.
It still is a park. And under the municipal, under the public use, prior public use doctrine, you would have to change the use to now require 2/3 vote of town meeting and a majority vote of the state legislature.
Right.
And so that not, that really isn't a deal breaker, because legislative restrictions can be undone or redone legislatively.
All of the above can be done.
Correct, all of the above can be done, if it's the right site.
Right, but the question is, do you want to spend $200,000, any money more on a site if the town doesn't want it at that site?
That's, the question is, because at one of the Select Board meetings, a comment was made, because the Adult Center Building Committee has talked, you know, specifically, but they don't have a concept to show, but how they do want to make this a more recreationally-oriented facility. And have more recreationally-oriented programs, which is why I think the Parks Department, sorry, the Park Commissioners really took a liking to the idea. So if you support it, you're supporting the notion that, let's really define what this is going to be, let's, you know, see what the, what it's going to look like, how much it would cost, what are the recreational amenities we can add? And then if we still don't like it, we can vote against it again later on. Or you can be against this simply on principle of using parkland for anything but parks.
Right.
And that's really where the kind of battle lines, if you will, have been drawn.
And I think that's a fair statement.
And, you know, I think it's really certainly developed, or it's certainly stimulated passionate discussion on both sides of the issue. And it's been, you know, honestly, the Select Board really didn't take a position on the site.
I was going to ask that.
They didn't take a position. Basically, if you watch the meeting where they did the warrant, they basically said, you know, people are really passionate about this, let's let town meeting decide.
Okay, and also I note, the Finance Committee did not recommend it.
They did not.
Yeah, okay. So hopefully, good discussion. I mean, there's no question that it would be great to have a new senior center.
Sure.
And there's no question that the people, the committee has put a lot of well-meaning, passionate effort, as you've said, into this project. So I think this is going to be a good indicator for the town which way to go. And it doesn't mean it can't go again. You know, I mean, when you're looking at priorities, you've got a DPW building there.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's broad consensus that DPW is the number one priority, and we're really working hard to get to that. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't be in a position where we are to make, in the annual town meeting coming up this May, we're going to be in a position to really define, what does it look like? What's the floor plan? How big is it? How much is it going to cost in a very specific way? Because town meeting had previously given us design dollars, which we had tied to Wolf Swamp Fields.
Right.
And that's really kind of, if you want an example of what happens to Article 7, you know, up or down, town, a previous fall town meeting gave us about $450,000 on top of $250 we'd already received to fund the engineering and planning for DPW.
And the town spoke up.
And we had said for Wolf Swamp Fields, and they approved the sum. Once we got more deeply into site selection, Wolf Swamp Field was seen as not favorable for a variety of good reasons, and that's where we ended up at Grand Meadows. And so this is kind of a similar thing, where you can vote for this to really advance the design of the senior center, even if you're not wild about the Bliss Park idea. But you're still advancing it to that end.
Yeah, or it can vote it down, and that money can still be advanced at another time.
At another time, and let's go, you know, tell the Adult Center Building Committee or the Select Board, go back to the drawing board on the site and come back and let us know.
Yeah, because we've got to stage these projects anyway.
Correct.
I mean, you do have a middle school in the mix somewhere, you have a DPW site, and you have a senior center.
Yes.
All three big, good projects.
And we are, you know, people say you should consider them all kind of as, you know, at once. Well, the analogy I've been using is, is if you have congestive heart failure, you know, a torn ACL and athlete's foot, you're not really going to look at your, managing your healthcare.
I'm not trying to ask you which you think is which.
No, but, yeah, because they're different for every person looking at it. But you're not going to look at your ailments as one thing before you decide on your approach. You're going to attack the most pressing need first. And if it means delaying repairing surgery on your ACL so you can fix your heart, you're going to do that. And so we do look at all three projects in terms of what are the dominoes that fall after that.
Staging them, sure.
Staging them, like Paul Puszczyk has a schedule of debt going out 30 years for the three projects and what. So we do look at them all at the same time, but they're just at different stages of need. They're at different stages of, you know, germination. A middle school effort that starts tomorrow is still almost a decade in the making.
Right, at least five years.
Yeah, at least five years. But I still think that, and there's a vibrant discussion about middle schools, and in fact, there's a forum tonight that we're going to have, and I think, you know, what I think the Select Board wants is the community to commit to the DPW as a project, so it can't get displaced yet again by other projects, because for the last 30 years, it's been displaced.
30 years, it's been displaced. I think the time is right for that right now, but I'm obviously prejudiced about that. So I think this has been great. I think for me, you know, you've definitely clarified a lot of issues, a lot of great things going on in the town, and people investing a lot of time and energy in those projects, elected officials, yourself, and these task forces.
We do our best.
Yeah, well, it's great.
And I think we're close to a half an hour.
I think we, well, a little bit over, but that's okay. We're good. So in summary, there's a special town meeting, we're now taping this a little bit less than a week before the date of the town meeting, which is October 25th, Tuesday night. It's at 7 o'clock at the high school in the.
Gym.
Gymnasium.
Give yourself a little bit of time to get registered.
Yeah, so we can get started at 7, because I know Madam Moderator will want us to get started on time. And come, the warrant is online, and it's available at the town hall or not?
It's available, and you can certainly get one, I think, at town hall. You can also get it online. I think, I have heard some, it's now, I think, on our main.
A little harder to find in the town.
Yeah, we have to do, and I get, I don't really, I get them via email, so I don't surf the town website very often.
Yeah, but I did, and I was a little hard, I couldn't find it.
You have to click on the meeting link.
I had to go to Long Meadow Biz to get it, actually.
Oh, you have to click on.
I did that. Keep going.
So you click on the meeting link.
Yeah.
So you have, there's a calendar, it's a special, you click on it, and then it's a download agenda, and that's where this is. But I did ask, and I did today, put the warrant.
Right in face, front and face.
Right in the front and center, yeah.
You really need to do that, yeah. So there are, so there's a popery of articles. Some are zoning bylaws, some are bylaws, some are transfer spending, fire truck, big money. And then the, probably the highlight of the evening will be Article 7, which will be the senior center slash Bliss Park conversation. So we hope this has helped illuminate your minds and others and your friends, and you'll come to the town meeting on October 25th. Thank you, Stephen Crane.
And again, certainly call town hall if you have any questions about any of the warrant articles.
Sure, in advance. Thank you, and good night.